Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, January 29. We call to order at 7:40 p.m. First topic of, well, we'll pass over the review of meeting minutes from February 13, 2023. Move to review and finalize town planer position interview questions.
So as you arrived, I was handing out a packet. I took some liberty of just putting some together that are, it's a compilation of some quest, some standard questions that we've used in not only this screening, but in several of our screenings.
Recent, yeah.
Recent screenings. And also just a couple that I found that I, I think were unique to Irving. That would make sense, being a small rural community. But if you're willing to entertain it, take a look at it. I know in the email, we had the original 11 or 12 for review, plus I had sent along, I think, another 10 or 11 additional that we could contemplate. And I just took the liberty of putting some together. If you want to take a little bit, we can add, subtract, delete.
Well, I'm gonna take a minute to flip through. If you have any comments or questions or thoughts already, please.
Is this what you put together as a compilation of this?
Of what was sent in the, it was of what was sent in the packet. So there's nothing in here that was not in the agenda packet. It's just a few of each.
So this wasn't the previous rounds?
No, no, it's not the previous rounds. This has some different, just a couple of different that I had come across that I thought were really, you know, intriguing questions.
Sure.
So I wanted to sort of mix it up a little bit and put them, put them in front of the both of you and see if you have any concerns with those. If, just so you don't have to go back and forth. Number three would have been a new one.
Mm-hmm.
Number seven. Number eight. That's it, just those three. And the remaining ones are previous ones that we've used in screenings and interviews in the past.
Thank you for that. I was actually.
Yeah, I figured you were trying to figure out where I got them from.
I was going with all three and I didn't know if this was how we were going to formulate the whole thing, but it looks like, you know.
I had, I had an extra, you know, four minutes before I flew up here, so I put it together to see if I could help it along.
You do great work. Thank you.
Don't mind the formatting, because I could not.
It's got the grid, it's got room for comments, it's got the question. That's good enough.
Yeah, I was like, I put a page break in and then it took me like.
We'll let Brian appropriate this one and critique it. I can switch roles for a minute instead of being on the other side of that normally. Is this the result of our last review of the, kind of the updates from that meeting when we reviewed all the projects? Thank you. I still have that note open somewhere over here. I know we haven't revisited it since, so.
We are ambitious.
That's just page one.
I know.
Although I feel like we should take the snapshot for a little posterity because a lot of things dropped off too, not because they got pushed down.
Maybe I could learn myself how to hide things that are completed so they've been lost initially. They shouldn't be deleted, they should just hide.
Right. We're good at running forward. Reflecting on where we've been wouldn't hurt. Comments? I won't leak here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna give any comments.
You summarized them for us.
I, I will just say after reviewing these, I, I am very comfortable with what appears to be a very well-rounded battery of questions and I'm comfortable moving forward with them as two gentlemen are. And thank you again, Scott, for taking the time to put it together, even if it was only four minutes.
We wouldn't have known it wasn't longer if you didn't say anything.
Oh, trust me, it took me longer than four minutes.
Was I being sarcastic again?
Gotta keep it light on day, day three.
Yes, day three or four.
Day three in a row. I concur. Going to read through them, we have a few more minutes before we'll start interview anyway, but I didn't see anything that I thought would benefit from any changes so far.
Okay, yeah, I tried to capture a blade.
I know, I kind of had a lot of, lot to pull from, so.
Yeah.
And we've done these a few times, so, in variety of positions at least, having set up here for a variety of these roles and a variety of hiring and screening committees. Think you did a great job at pulling them all together.
Unless you wanted the fourth copy, but I assumed it was.
Nope, it's, you know, it's her.
Not that you haven't seen it since you wrote it.
Lived it.
I do. Would you like me to email it to you right now?
I'm just gonna do a concise list so that Glenn can follow along with you.
You got it, I'll do it right now. Ay, ay, ay. Give me a second, Brian, sorry. All right, you should have it in a second. I'm gonna recess, or you have stuff you're working on for the next?
No, if you want to take a 10-minute.
Yeah.
All right. Make the motion to recess until 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will return in 10 minutes.
Thank you.
That way I don't just walk out while.
Thank you. Not the level of lively conversation we have on these sometimes. I was anticipating more on the fly and less prepared than we are tonight, which I appreciate. I think, Brian, that means we've been doing this too long. Usually when I sit on a screening committee, we have new enough members that we're kind of starting again. Usually when I sit on a screening committee, we've had new enough members that we're kind of starting again.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
And a follow-up to that with your experience with project management. Where do you place post-mortem in the essence of project management? Meaning, is it, would it be part of your normal routine? And perhaps is there anything in the process of, say, a nugget of wisdom, an aha moment? That you said that we can improve our process moving forward? Is there anything you could share with us?
Yeah, I would say there's kind of a tension between the number of different projects going on and the urge to just move on to the next one because something else is on fire. But I think for the most significant projects, it is important to take that time to reflect. And I think a very simple process is just what went well and what can be improved in the future. And one thing that I've tried to do with some of the recurring projects that we have in Wendell is actually create some documentation of the process. So every time you do learn new things or you adapt to new things, going into the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic, you know, how do you manage a town meeting? And what, you know, what's the timeline? When do you need to go and set up the A V. Equipment now that we're also streaming some of our meetings? So it is really important to take that time with the most significant projects to evaluate what went well and what can be improved in the future and document it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So. How would you approach managing potential conflicts between new development and existing residents in a close-knit community?
So potential conflicts, I suppose, you know, there's both the kind of formal process of having a hearing and giving people a chance to come and share their concerns. And that's certainly important. But I think also there's a lot of listening and one-on-one relationship building and helping to communicate a vision for, you know, some things require change. Some people are resistant to that. And sort of acknowledging the challenges, but also reminding people what's inspiring about what it is that is happening or the reason why it's happening, whether it's inspiring or not. Maybe there's a legal reason for it or some other regulatory reason for it. So I think it's a balance between making sure those formal events go well and are meaningful ways for the public to participate, but also having those one-on-one conversations and sharing a vision.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So here in the town of Irving, the Town Planner provides administrative support to the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Senior Housing Committee, and also collaborates with other town department heads and regional partners. Can you speak to your vision and your experience with these town groups and what you've learned from those experiences?
Sure. That's a pretty wide range of boards and commissions. But I'm familiar with that in Wendell. It's a small town, so the town coordinator really interacts with everybody. So everything from, you know, we have a Conservation Commission issue right now with a household that wants to remove a dam and all of the Conservation Commission issues that that brings up. Making sure that they have the resources they need to facilitate that process. I know our planning board has done extensive work in trying to manage our battery energy storage system issues and creating bylaws around that and helping to shepherd those through the process of hearings and bringing them to town meeting. Zoning Board of Appeals, our current challenge in Wendell would be recruiting and maintaining a committee that can do that work. Especially, I'm seeing some recognition here.
Sounds familiar.
A challenging board to fill since it requires a lot of expertise and a lot of technical know-how. But also, obviously, you're in a small community and have to recruit from there. Yeah, and our Council on Aging, you know, connects with us, connects with me about their needs around fixing different aspects of the building, coordinating cleaning with the massages that come in there and so on. So there is a lot of breadth in this work. And I think that the vision I have is to be of use, to be helpful, and to respond to things without looking very carefully at a job description to just, I feel like everyone needs to pitch in in a small town. So, and I really enjoy that teamwork of working together. So that's my vision.
Thank you.
Looking at the project list that you have there in front of you, or part of our project list, the town of Irving is in the middle of numerous planning-related projects, including economic development, transportation and safety, emergency preparedness, energy efficiency and sustainability, and improvements to our cultural and recreational opportunities and land uses. As you look at this list, and, you know, please feel free to take a moment if you would like before you answer. When you take a look at that list of current and upcoming projects, discuss how you'd approach the work and helping make the town consistently make progress on all of these projects simultaneously.
Thank you. Yes, I got a chance to look at this in advance of the screening committee interview, and we had a good discussion about this. I feel that the schedule is a useful tool. We kind of were decoding the key, basically. And it kind of talks about the amount of resource, I think, that's needed in each quarter to advance each goal. And certainly that is a useful tool in helping to prioritize your energies. A lot of times, there's just a lot of things that are kind of on fire simultaneously. You have to just jump in and figure out how to meet the next reporting deadline and so on. But you have to also be simultaneously keeping the big picture in mind and trying to make progress on those bigger goals that might be more difficult. I know you all are struggling a little bit with the finding the funds for the demolition of the mills and things like that. I don't know all the ins and outs, but I think that's the kind of thing where it's important to keep an eye on those projects that you don't yet have. The outside groups expecting things from you and, you know, deliverable deadlines. But the bigger picture, things that you want for the town and that the Select Board, you know, is part of the Select Board's vision, but that isn't kind of grabbing your attention. So it takes intentionality to carve out the time for those types of projects.
Okay. Okay. Mine's a little more direct and to the point like question number one. Next is, what motivates you to do well in your role?
I think that one thing that has motivated me for my whole career has been public service and trying to figure out how to be of use to my fellow people and make things go better for them. And I've really relished the opportunity to kind of increase the scope over time of the things that I've been able to do. I started my career kind of running health programs in Brattleboro, Vermont, worked with the Communities of the Care Coalition in Greenfield on youth substance use prevention, did some emergency preparedness work with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. Have gotten to do some diversity, equity, and inclusion work. And now this work in Wendell as the town coordinator. And I feel like the common theme has been both kind of a north star for me of service and wanting to help and make the world a better place. And then the other aspect of it is that there's just always been something about me where I've enjoyed figuring out how many plates I can keep up in the air at the same time. And I'm a big fan of productivity, learning about productivity and human psychology, human motivation, how to organize, how to do personal knowledge management and keep all that stuff. So I enjoy, I guess, geeking out about those types of things. And those skills come in handy with this type of work and just trying to get the most out of the day that I can for the people I'm working for.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
One second before I go to the next question.
I like the spinning plates reference.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them.
Glenn, how would you prioritize projects with limited funding in a small town, considering both immediate needs and the long-term vision?
Let's see, I want to make sure I answer what you're trying to get at. So could you give an example maybe of what, I mean, you have this list of projects, and some of them are maybe fully funded and some of them have.
Yeah, so looking at that list, you would, some of those are going to take far more funds and time. Some are maybe of a high priority but not having the funding. Some are low lifts, have the funding, and there's limited resources to spread around. So it's asking the question of how would you look at that? And how do you prioritize, understanding that the pot doesn't get much bigger than it is? And that we have both immediate needs that have to happen and long-term goals that have to happen? And just sort of like, what's your process of how you would look at that?
Yeah, well, I don't want to duck the question, but I feel like part of what I would be looking for would be guidance from you all. I mean, you all are, I mean, I certainly would, I think, in this role, come in, provide you as much information as I could and inform you, maybe make recommendations.
Um, looking at the project list that you have there in front of you, or, or part of our project list, uh, the town of Irving is in the middle of numerous planning-related projects, including economic development, transportation and safety, emergency preparedness, energy efficiency and sustainability, and improvements to our cultural and recreational, um, opportunities and land uses. As you look at this list and, you know, please feel free to take a moment if you would like before you answer, when you take a look at that list of current and upcoming projects, discuss how you'd approach the work and, and helping make the town consistently make progress on all of these projects simultaneously.
Thank you. Um, yes, I got a chance to, to look at this in advance of the screening committee interview, and we had a good discussion about this. Um, I feel that the, the schedule is a useful tool. Um, we kind of were decoding the, um, the key basically, and, uh, it kind of talks about the, um, the amount of resource, I think, that's needed in each quarter to advance each goal, and, um, certainly that is a useful tool in helping to prioritize your energies. Um, a lot of times, there's just a lot of things that are kind of on fire simultaneously. You have to just jump in and figure out how to meet the next reporting deadline and so on. But you have to also be simultaneously keeping the big picture in mind and trying to make progress on those bigger goals that might be more difficult. Um, I know you all are struggling a little bit with the, finding the funds for the demolition of the mills and things like that. I don't know all the ins and outs, but I think that's the kind of thing where it's important to keep an eye on those projects that you don't yet have the outside groups expecting things from you and, you know, deliverable deadlines, but the bigger picture, things that you want for the town and that the select board, you know, is part of the select board's vision, but that isn't kind of grabbing your attention. So it takes intentionality, um, to, to carve out the time for those types of projects.
Yeah, any further follow-up questions?
Okay.
It's a big question, but...
Yeah, I think I got it.
Yeah. It's a big question.
It is.
Mine's a little more direct and to the point like question number one. Um, next is, what motivates you to do well in your role?
Um, I think that one thing that has motivated me for my whole career has been public service and trying to figure out how to be of use, uh, to my fellow people and make things go better for them. And, uh, I've really relished the opportunity to kind of increase the scope over time of the things that I've been able to do. Um, I started my career kind of running health programs in Brattleboro, Vermont, um, worked with the Communities, the Care Coalition, and, um, Greenfield on Youth Substance Use Prevention. Did some emergency preparedness work with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. Um, have gotten to do some, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and now this, uh, work in Wendell, um, as the town coordinator. And I feel like the common theme has been, uh, both kind of a north star for me of, of service and wanting to help and make thing, make the world a better place. Um, and then the other aspect of it is that there's just always been something about me where I've enjoyed figuring out how many plates I can keep up in the air at the same time. And I'm a big fan of, um, like productivity, learning about productivity and human psychology, human motivation, how to organize, how to do personal knowledge management and keep all that stuff. So I, I enjoy, I guess, uh, geeking out about those types of things, and, uh, those skills come in handy, um, with this type of work and just trying to, um, get the most out of the day that I can for the people I'm working for.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
One second before I go to the next question.
I like the spinning plates reference.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them.
Okay. You two all set?
I am.
Good, good.
Good, thank you.
Uh, Glenn, how would you prioritize projects with limited funding in a small town, considering both immediate needs and the long-term vision?
Let's see, I want to make sure I, I answer what you're trying to get at. So could you give an example maybe of what, um, I mean, you have this list of projects, and some of them are maybe fully funded and some of them have...
Yeah, so, uh, looking at that list, you would, some of those are going to take far more funds and time. Some are, uh, may be of a high priority but not having the funding. Some are low lifts, have the funding, and there's limited resources to spread around. So it's, it's asking the question of how would you look at that? Um, and how do you prioritize, understanding that the pot doesn't get much bigger than it is? And that we have both immediate needs that have to happen and long-term goals that have to happen? And just sort of like, what's your process of how you would look at that?
Yeah, well, um, I don't want to duck the question, but I feel like part of what I would be looking for would be guidance from you all. I mean, you all are, uh, I mean, I certainly would, I think, in this role, come in, provide you as much information as I could and inform you, um, maybe make recommendations. Um, but, um, you're, you live here and you were elected by your, um, fellow citizens to, to lead. And so, um, I, I feel like in terms of, you know, you're going to have those projects that are funded and have their own timelines and deliverables, and that is kind of set. You have to meet those. That's like the, the basic. But there, there is also always a little bit of time at least to try to work towards those bigger goals and those bigger priorities. And if there isn't funding yet, you're always looking for, how are you going to get the funds to be able to take that on? Um, once you get those funds, usually comes with timelines attached and deliverables attached. Um, but those are the things, it's looking for those opportunities for, for funding, whether it's having a relationship, um, with, uh, with Senator Comerford to know, so that she always knows what the town is looking for funding for, if earmarks become available, or if some, um, keeping any, an eye out for, um, different funding opportunities that, that might happen. Um, so, um, and then of course balancing, um, the ambitions of the town with the capacity that we have to make things happen. Um, so sometimes there, you know, we discussed a little in the screening interview, sometimes, uh, a project comes along and you, you can't, the funding is there, but you can't take it right now. Um, there just isn't enough bandwidth to make it all happen and, and, uh, so I know you all have had that experience. We've had that experience too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might struggle to say no, though.
It is hard to say no, yes, it's true.
So this might be circling back to one of the earlier questions, um, about new initiatives and relatives. And you mentioned regulatory purposes for something that may or may not be popular and sort of weaving that into one of your comments you just made where, you know, you would look to us. So we are the authority, but we work for, represent the people of this community.
Yeah.
How would you approach one of those issues where, um, you can see the urgency or the importance of something, um, that maybe the board or the town administrator or somebody isn't prioritizing as much as you think it should be?
Ah, okay.
How would you tackle that situation or, or the topic?
Yeah, um, well, one benefit, um, that the town planner or the town administrator have that, that you all don't have is the ability to deliberate with everybody and the chance to talk one-on-one with everyone. Um, and so I think that there's a, a balance for someone in this role of, um, you, you want the person to have a perspective and to be able to advocate for things that they think are important. At the same time, then, there's a, a moment where a decision is made and everyone has to be on the same team and be pulling in the same direction, whether that's my, what I was advocating for or not. Um, so I think that the way, I mean, the way I tend to, uh, approach advocacy is to be very direct with people about what it is that I'm proposing, why I'm proposing it, and making it clear that I actually am making a case for something, um, having those very direct and honest conversations. Um, but then I think it is very important to have a decision point where the advocacy is over, the conversations are over, the decision is made, and we, we're moving forward. And, um, you know, whether one per, one individual gets their way or not is not important. What is important is the collective.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well said. Are you good on that one?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
More than good on that one, thank you.
Um, how would you approach community engagement in a small rural town to ensure that all the voices are heard and considered in that planning process?
Um, great question. Um, well, I guess, as I mentioned before, in the planning process, there's usually both kind of an informal and informal element. So you want your formal element to be well organized so that people have the, the notice that's required. And I think also that you go beyond the, the minimum of having things printed in the newspaper, but trying to reach people where they are, um, whether that's on social media or on email lists or on the town website, but trying to find ways to communicate that this isn't just a meeting where we're checking the box to say we had a hearing, but we actually want to hear from you, um, and making sure those meetings are, are well organized so that, um, everyone does feel listened to and taken care of, and there's access for, for everybody regardless of, um, disabilities or whatnot. Um, the other aspect of it, I think, is, um, making yourself available to the public. Um, uh, so, for example, I, I was watching your meeting from the other night, and someone was talking about a, a grant that they were applying for, and they said, anyone in the town who's interested, please give me a call. And I feel like that kind of availability is really important, and I would want to, to be available for those one-on-one conversations as well.
Mr. Basra, you're good?
I'm all set, thank you, sir.
Okay, so, uh, next question, I'm going to go back maybe to a, a theme you commented on earlier and you build on when you said you geek out about this stuff. Here is a chance to elaborate. How do you stay informed and up-to-date on changes with zoning ordinance and regulations? And can you give an example as to how this knowledge would help you as a town planner?
Yeah, so I, this question was also asked on the screening committee level, and I'm glad I'm getting another chance at it. It is true that I don't actually do a lot of, um, work on zoning ordinances currently in Wendell, um, but I am often put into situations where I have to figure out the next step in a technical environment where I haven't had that expertise or knowledge. And, um, these jobs are so ambitious in some ways that you're always learning. You always have to have an approach to, to learning, um, new things. And so the, uh, an example is, you know, for example, having to, organizing my first, um, town auction and learning what those regulations were was a, a, a combination of different strategies I went, I went to to get that information from interviews with people who've been involved in town auctions before, finding mass general law about it, um, finding other more readable, user-friendly resources on the internet. So I feel like, um, you know, uh, uh, your, your questions and your project list show that whoever's in this role is going to have a lot to learn in a lot of different areas. And I feel like I love to learn and I'm ambitious about learning, and I kind of take a all-modes approach. The other, the other information that's often available is formal training from the state because they are often working with members of the community who need to be brought up to speed, and there are those types of kind of formal training opportunities as well. So I'm always looking for both formal and informal ways to learn.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we have a diverse citizenship that has strong opinions about change. How would you handle a highly-charged situation in a public forum? For context, the town of Irving records and livestreams many town meetings, select boards, uh, select board meetings and various public hearings.
Sure, um, and yes, we in Wendell, but also in my work on, um, as chair of the Greenfield School Committee, um, frequently am livestreaming in highly-charged situations. And, um, there are two things that come to mind. Um, one is just the, the emotional tone, um, from members of the public. They certainly are entitled to have their feelings and share and show their feelings in a public setting. As a professional, it's important to maintain, um, a calm demeanor and to approach work, keep the focus on the problem at hand, um, and also to help people feel listened to. And I feel like some, one thing that, uh, can really take the temperature down in a room sometimes is just sharing back what you're hearing from people. If people do not feel they're being listened to, um, it will often drive up the volume of the tension and the frustration. Um, and you can often bring that tension down by, um, clearly communicating back to them what it is. You, you hear them, um, saying, um, so, eh, um, those are the things that come to mind in answer to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other information that you believe it is, uh, is important to your application that you'd like to share with the committee?
Um, nothing is coming to mind, to be honest. I feel like I've had a good chance to talk about myself here tonight. I appreciate your, the thoughtfulness of the questions, and it's an interesting discussion, to be honest, yeah.
It has covered a lot of things. I will say for, for, uh, a set of questions that I know we didn't spend too much time, uh, kind of modifying to start, I'll just say that I think they, uh, they managed to cover a wide variety of, of the scope of the role, so, and what we were hoping to hear or understand more about and how you would approach it, so, thank you.
And what may be my favorite question of all? Do you have any questions for us?
Sure, um, maybe you could explain a little bit more about how the position is organized? Uh, does it report directly to you or to Brian? Um, or how does that dynamic work between the select board and the, the town administrator and the town planner?
So, I mean, I'll start, and then, uh, obviously you all can add in, and Brian, if we miss anything. Um, so it is structured, it, it reports to the town administrator? As is true for many of the, um, departments that do report directly to the board, uh, even the day-to-day, you know, management of our operations and our departments are handled by Brian for us and the town administrator role. Um, this one is specifically direct to the town administrator? And then, uh, that was really only one small part of your question. Uh, the, the overall, um, engagement is a variety of levels. Um, the board, uh, you know, like this master project list often has meetings where the town planner role is participating. And we're having a lot of that discussion that was referenced earlier about prioritization, about balancing, um, long-term vision, short-term, uh, immediate need, and giving some of that direction from, from the, our role as, you know, what do we see as where, you know, there are fires or there are safety or regulatory needs that we need to focus on? But also, um, big picture vision, where do we think that we should be pursuing funding opportunities towards, you know, a, a larger-scale, um, project? Or something like the IP mill situation where it has been a long project and, and still continues to be something that we all want to see move somewhere better, um, but isn't going to happen overnight, and there's been long periods of hoping for and, and brainstorming about, and those discussions while they're happening in open meetings, um, for the board to have those dialog, those are engaged with, you know, with the town planner, with the town administrator, and, and a variety of roles to, to brainstorm and move forward, um, on the bigger vision, so. Is there a few pieces? I'm not sure I answered everything you asked, but...
I'll chime in a little bit about the structure. Knowing that boards have to convene, we have to call a meeting, and sometimes you just want a little guidance. In Irving, we have, we all serve, all three of us serve as liaisons to various departments, department heads, other boards and commissions. Um, I'm currently the liaison to the planning, uh, department, so I would be working directly with the town planner. So there was oftentimes the, the person that filled the role previously just wanted some guidance, but it's not rising to the level of we need to get it to a meeting or we need to have this fully involved, just a little back and forth. And we can do that one-on-one because we're not, uh, working as a quorum. So it's, you know, that structure of having that liaison, having that point of contact to say, what are your thoughts? Uh, is this something that should go to the full board? Is this something that I should just move forward with and, and apply? And we'll do it as a, a memo of just notification that this happened? And, you know, sort of doing that informal conversation, um, as a buffer from having to convene a formal meeting every time you wanted to get the board's sort of guidance on a, on a situation. Now, there was oftentimes the, the question that would come forward is a much larger and has three or four different ripple effects that could happen if we move forward with it. And the, the information or the answer sometimes is, let's put together a memo, and it's going to go in front of the board. Um, and so we'll, you know, but there's times where things have been time-sensitive and decisions need to be made, and we can't convene a meeting in a 24-hour period, you have to give notice. So that's where that chain of, you know, you have a director, uh, supervisor, but you also have a liaison, you have the full board, so there's various outlets to have that chain of communication happen.
That's great, that organization that you're talking about, that's wonderful.
And then there's times where, depending on the decision, it might be more of a, you know, executive decision where it has to go, it goes to the chair, whoever that is at the time, rather than liaison because of what it is, but maybe it isn't, um, doesn't allow for the time to convene, but it needs a different level. There's times where it's related to a project that's a different department. And so, you know, if it was like public safety, for example, and I'm the liaison to all the public safety team departments, so if it was a project related to that and that question, it may be something that you bring to me rather than to your liaison, and, and, you know, same with, with Jim. So it's dynamic in some ways. I mean, there's structure there, but we also try to keep it very, um, eh, eh, a little more matrixed to really be appropriate for whatever the topic is at hand. And it kind of goes to your comment earlier about the, the one-on-one and the ability to kind of collaborate and discuss and, and bring all that together to getting to good decision-making, hopefully.
Thank you. What do you, um, see as your kind of medium and or long-range vision for this role? For the town planner role in the town?
Um, well, in... Well, you said medium and long. I mean, what I would see is short-term, immediate. Um, this person's role is going to have to start building those relationships that we can leverage in the future. Get, um, this person will need to get their feet underneath them, get comfortable, really understand what, okay, well, we have a list and we've learned the dynamics, you know, the, the management style, whether it's on that static-like chain of command and area of responsibility or if it's more in that dynamic fluid end of, um, this is an area where we need to step up. Um, I can't speak for the board or the town as a whole, but what I would be looking for, uh, moderate, uh, medium-range and long-term range is somebody who can work collaboratively with the stakeholders in this town and, um, provide quality input. and provide quality input, information, the ability to lead from within the team where necessary, and help to frame what the long-term vision from all of the stakeholders blends into that one vision. Maybe to touch a little bit about, on what you said is, you know, there's a lot of conversations and a lot of things that happen, and everybody's thoughts and input is valued. And then at some point, we all have to work to bring it together and help guide that, okay, the decision's being made, and this is the direction we're moving. And as I said, I can't speak for the whole board of the town, but I'm looking for somebody that can take on the leadership and responsibility within that role to be a part of the whole decision-making process as we go forward.
Thank you.
That would maybe...
No, I'm just laughing because I'm like, Jim just took everything that I was gonna say.
He got, he got most of it from me, too. No, no, no.
Well, you did all the questions.
It's good that we share similar overall viewpoints on kind of where we are, where we need to be, where we want to be. I think it's good. It also shows, I think, our, that we're all in tune with constituents in different ways, but bringing all that together. I think developing that, that longer-term vision and assisting the various groups, open space, in a couple of days, open space committee meeting, and kind of renewing and refreshing that plan and that vision for, you know, that arena within the town. But broadly, there are some, you know, pockets of vision in different areas that are well-refined. There are some that are very vague and, and need better definition and structure. And then bringing all those together into something that we are able to reliably reference and reflect on. It's dynamic, it's living, but it's also, are we kind of staying the course and on, on plan with where we think we need to be? And I think one of the biggest overarching things that at least I and I hear, and I think we've discussed being concerned about is, you know, the economic development and sustainability, right?
Yeah.
Of a town, small towns especially. Things get more expensive, you know, regulations become more and more unfunded mandates at a state level. There's a finite amount of resources, funding, taxpayers. And how do we balance all that and try to ensure that we are keeping the town services accessible, usable, affordable, and maintaining, you know, a robust or, or growing the, the economics of the, of the town to support that without just continued burden on the taxpayers? Which is, is what it is, but how do we broaden that base? How do we spread that out, right, to make it more attainable, tenable for everyone?
Thank you.
I'll give a little different flair to it. They talked more of a, Jake talked more about a technical, you know, the economic development piece. My long-term vision would be somebody that can embrace this role and become intimately familiar with the town's projects, our ambitious nature of projects that we take on and how we try and do too much, too fast. But become very in tune with sort of the ebb and flow of how, how that works, that you can become that strong leader that sort of is understanding of all of the contrasting visions that happen throughout this town. And that could be from residents, it could be from other boards and commissions. We have very strong visions of how things should move. And sort of the town planner, in my eyes, is somebody who can see those, understand those, digest those, and sort of find a way to use their own knowledge, their own vision, their own leadership skills to find that happy medium and keep things moving, consistently moving and not stalling out. Oftentimes, we can see leaders that may struggle with that, and there'll be few opposing views, and it just falls flat. And the project stalls and it goes nowhere. It doesn't change its form, it doesn't change its shape, it doesn't have any sort of bend or give. It's just two oppositions, we're not doing this, it's not going forward anywhere. I'm looking for a leader that can say, is there a happy medium? Can we have a conversation about the visions that, the contrasting visions that are out here? And is there a way to move this forward that can find equity somewhere in there?
Yep. Thank you all. I don't have any other questions, but I sure appreciate your having me in for this interview and the thoughtful questions and the wonderful discussion.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you for being here and making the time. I think from here, we'll, we'll deliberate and go from there. So, thank you again.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Have a great evening.
You, too. Good night.
Now, the awkward part. Not, not, not really. Thoughts, comments?
So, I have comments and thoughts.
I hope so.
I'll give you both. You know, we could go through a process of, you know, tallying it up. Our format allows us to give numbers. I'm going to give more of just a feel. He scored really well in a lot of the categories. His knowledge is vast about, you know, and it may not be direct with years of experience as a town planner coming in, but the, the wide range of experience in leading, you know, people in municipal work, I think will lend heavily to an easy transition into this role. There were certain highlights that came through that really intrigued me, even more so in this one than in the screening one. And there were, in question four, when he circled back, like, he didn't miss a beat. There wasn't, on these, we gave him some multi-part questions. He didn't miss a beat. He circled back through, he didn't need the extra prompting. He didn't lose sight of what we were asking. He understood what it was. The plates in the air was fantastic because we ask all of our department heads to juggle all the time. Brian's smiling because he knows. The questions he asked us were fantastic because it was trying to glean a little bit of information about the feel of the town, the vision, the structure, and really trying to dig in and understand. Having known others that have served on the Greenfield School Committee in years past, him mentioning that he was able to be the chair of that committee, I believe he still currently is the chair of that committee.
That's correct.
And to know that you can be in that arena and maintain decorum and composure and a vision is, if there was a six on the score of one through five, I would have given him on that one. That was a, you know, he also has a, he's got a demeanor about him that is calming. And the, I won't, I won't hit it verbatim the way he said it, but when you're dealing with agitated residents, excited individuals that are, you know, heated about something, both good and bad. I mean, it can be heated because they're angry, or they could be passionate because they have, you know, vision that they really want to push forward. The, he talked about making sure that people feel heard and parroting back and making sure, and that's a technique that is phenomenal. And I was so glad that he brought that up because it truly does work wonders when people feel like they're being heard and, you know.
And the other piece of that, that he mentioned, and I've, I'd like to believe I've successfully utilized that skill in the past, is meeting people where they're at. That was one comment that resonated with me. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, you're, you're fine. The, the last thing I was going to say was, without getting into this back and forth about scores and everything else, I would have, I'd be very comfortable with offering him the town planner's position. Part of the, one of the things I wanted to see out of a candidate, and he showed this in both the screening committee interview and in this interview, is I want to see somebody come into this position that can relieve our town administrator of the dual role that he's been holding with as little onboarding time as possible. And I think this candidate comes in, will need some onboarding, for sure. And will need some guidance, for sure. I don't think that's a year-long guidance. I don't think we're, it's an extended period of guidance. I think that's a very...
Hit the ground running.
Yeah. It could hit the ground running, and then we'll, we'll need the guidance to fill in the pockets of information and the potholes that'll hit along the way. But I think those will be few and far between. I'm, I'm very confident that he could pick up that role and within the first couple of months, be very self-reliant and moving forward.
I echo your comment that I'm also comfortable in saying he could step in and take on this role. You know, in terms of some of the hard skills, maybe not everything is directly transferable, like, okay, check that box, check that box. But the overall basis of knowledge is certainly relatable and usable. And, you know, I believe, in, in just the way he formulated ques, formulated answers to our questions, as you said, and even the questions that he asked, I'm very comfortable saying that he does have, again, the soft skills necessary to build those relationships, to meet the, you know, the interested parties, that passionate person that you speak of, or the cantankerous one. Like, like you said, that calming presence to go, okay, let's discuss this a little bit more. Let's get to the root of it. And when there are those two heads butting, you know, he strikes me as a person to say, well, is there one common goal that we both have? You could say, I want a healthy, clean future for our children and future generations. And somebody might say, well, that is done by this path. And then others would say, that is done by this path, which we know in our current society and culture, that polarization is there. And he can say, I want what's best for my kids, and I want what's best for our kids. Okay, well, let's work on that one common thread and bring that spectrum a little, the ends of it a little closer together. That's a long way of saying it. I think he's got the skill. Long worded answer, sorry.
It's all good. I, I think there is a good, good balance of thoughtful responses and the ability to bring the multiple complete thoughts together and, you know, kind of close that out full circle was very effective. The breadth of knowledge, whether it's, you know, specific about one thing or another or not, is going to be huge, you know, tools and assets, I think, in the, in this sort of role, in the variety of projects and things that we throw out this role and have and will continue to. And the level of support that it can provide to the administration overall, right? All the different things that we're doing and all the different areas that we may call on the planning role to support that. So, I, I agree. I think, I think it'd be very successful. Understanding the interest in as well as the comprehension of all the different pieces of what that role can need and bring. And also, at some point, takes direction and needs to support and move forward, whether that is what that, the person in that role felt was the best path or not, or advocated for or not. There's a point where now we've, we've made a decision and we are moving, and we are going to now pull together and go there. And that is, that is really important and critical, I think, too. Because you may have to then, in turn, be that person to pull all the others into that same direction. So, I think that's, that's critical. Again, same to, all said to say, I think that Glenn seems to be someone who could be very successful in the role that we're looking for. And bring a great balance of skills, you know, not, not necessarily planning, history, experience and volume, but the, the variety of background pieces that all support that success.
Next step?
Yeah. I mean, next step, we're all on the same page there. I mean, I haven't, obviously, we haven't heard from you, Brian, as the town administrator resident.
Well, that was my, in terms of formality and legality, so we've all sort of tipped our hat, but...
But please, yeah, come up for a minute and give us your, your, yeah, your, your take. If, if, you know, at the end of the day, we're talking about hiring someone that you are going to oversee. So, where do you sit?
I agree with all of the observations. I was not, even though I was on the screening committee, as you all appointed me as ex officio, I happened to be sick when two of the interviews were happening. And to keep a leaving, a level playing field, select ambassador, actually, I agreed that I would not attend the third. So, I did not sit through any of the screening committee. I just played a support role. So, this was my first time seeing Glenn in, in this atmosphere, and I agree with your observations. So, I would feel very comfortable with him in this role. In terms of process and legalese, it sounds like you all are coming to a decision. I wonder if you would identify a member from your board to work with me, to follow up with Glenn on whatever your, your wishes, and prepare a recommendation for your next meeting in terms of an appointment.
Scott, if you're comfortable, I mean, you've sat in on the screening committee.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that anyways. We have to meet over other stuff anyway, so we can just add that to the meeting. We'll make it a longer meeting. That's fine. I have no problem with that.
We'll have you work with Brian on that and come up with a recommendation for our next, I mean, Mondays soon.
It's February 3rd. So, I mean, yeah, we'll get ready for it.
Does that give you sufficient time, is my question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I believe so. And if for some reason, if working with...
Can always extend it if we need to.
Exactly. But I think we'll just, we'll add it to the agenda.
Yeah, you get it on there between now and Monday, 15 minutes before the meeting. We'll have it ready. No, I, I...
It will be ready in time.
We'll, we will be ready.
That was the 20 minutes recess that we could have used.
Right.
If we knew then what we know now.
Is there guidance from the, so, from the committee about if we're putting together an offer letter? That's the, you know, what we're, it sounds like we're all doing.
Yes. Yeah, maybe let's, let's be clear. We are looking to have a recommendation on putting together an offer.
Do you want, do you have recommendations on placement within the stepping grade? It's a grade F, correct? That has not changed. The classification is still a grade F.
It's an A, okay.
You know, we typically say between one and three. And I'm just taking into consideration, I'm not sure how long he's been with the, as a town coordinator, but...
Few years, couple, couple of years.
Couple of years as town coordinator and two decades of public service. So, I'm not sure if there's, you know, if that comes into play in either of your minds about an offer.
If we have a place where we're recommending work to start, or whether we have or not.
Between one and 10. You know, I mean, there's only 10 to choose from. We typically say one to three. If, if we were going to hold firm on the one to three, I would recommend the three, without, without batting an eye. If there's any inclination of any, anybody on the committee to enhance that, to take into consideration... If there's any inclination of anybody on the committee to enhance that, to take into consideration the candidate's ability, I'd be entertaining to that as well.
I don't have the table in front of me, but I thought I saw you pull it up the second I go.
I did pull it up, I'd have to go. I have it, I have it right here if you want to take a look at it. Because it's still the FY24 because we've made no changes, and that's the one that's on the website, so. We made zero changes to the table.
To FY25, yeah.
To FY25, so we're still functioning on the same table.
Yep.
Which on a side note, needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we have to re-circle back to that, we have a placeholder in the plan today, but we've got to come back to it, yep. So F, okay, I'm looking on the wrong column.
Are you pulling up the line item of what's available?
No, no, no.
We're halfway through, hopefully there's...
There's sufficient.
Some funds there.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Scott, I think, in recognition of all that experience that we just, you know, recognized verbally. I'd say a three, or there, no less than that.
Yeah, I have no concerns with that, I think that makes sense given the background and such to...
You want to stick with a three?
Yeah, I think. Any other pieces that you'd look for some guidance on or you, is that...
I think what we're going to, I think we have what we need to speak with Glenn, and I think we need to hear from him about the offer and to understand what his needs are for a transition, if he was accepting the offer. And that you all were gracious with me when I needed to transition from my previous employment, so I don't know what that looks like for him, so I think we need to ask.
Yeah, I think we know there's, there's going to be some period of, and whatever that, you know, I think, understanding what that might be. I think from my perspective, we could be flexible about a transition period of, rather than, you know, in addition or in, you know, versus a hard full start date or something, and I think that's something I think we should be flexible to.
I mean, let's be frank.
Yesterday would be great, but no.
It's been vacant this long, if our candidate that we're offering to says I need X amount of time, they're going to get X amount of time.
One, one thing I'd like to be mindful beyond the candidate is I would like us to still be good neighbors.
Yeah, that's...
Absolutely, absolutely.
And be mindful of our folks on the other side of the river.
Without a doubt. All right, I think we have enough to meet and...
I think so, agreed.
Get ready to have a conversation. While he's looking that up, Glenn has already given me information that we need to correct. Can you put a key on this about what those mean?
I heard it, and I saw you take the note and I knew it.
I actually wrote it down and said, this needs a key.
It doesn't show it on the printed one, that's for sure, I believe it is on the digital.
It is on the digital, but doesn't show up on the printed version.
But we can put it in like a header or something.
Yeah, yeah. So many times people look at that and say, that's the priority level.
It's a lot of things, and not the things we think it is.
Correct.
I am good.
Okay.
Okay.
And this one is, yeah, we have it at full-time, right?
Nothing else?
I think you guys have what you need, so.
Agreed.
Otherwise, you either bring it as a recommendation or make a decision, I think we're powering you to do that.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't think there's any concerns I have, that, you know where we are, I think we're on the same page as a group on where we want to go, so.
Okay.
Excellent. It's very, very good. I know it was one, it was one candidate and I didn't know what to expect out of that, but I am very pleased with where we got. I know these are hard ones to fill, so.
To steal this comment, a decision's been made, let's move forward.
Touche. All right, back to our agenda. With that, I'll make a motion when we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, chapter 30A, section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding the highway superintendent. We will not return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote, Brian, would you call the roll?
Selecting the link.
Aye.
Chairman Smith.
Aye.
Selecting Ambassador Ash.
Aye.
I can do it when it's not for boards.
I know, it's easier when I don't set you up with 18 people to do it. Thank you, everyone, have a good night, we will be back here on Monday.